We're live.
We are live. Welcome to the Main 7, Main 7, 2025 Planning Board Public Hearing. This hearing will come to order. Wyman Planning Board is holding a public hearing to review the application for 54 Wilderness Way, map 3, lot 33, wants to add vehicular vehicle inspection station currently is due for his landscaping company. Then we will go on with Daniel Makwa, 135 Shore Road, map 17, lot 57. Tom will chance to discuss the request for best practical location for a deck within the shoreland. We have Patrick Gagnon, come up. Good evening. You want to tell the public what you're planning on doing?
Yeah, opening up a inspection station to just pretty much just type my own vehicles and have to open to the public as well. Plan.
Does the public have any questions, concerns, comments? Does the board have any questions, concerns, comments at this moment? Well, I guess this is the quickest one I think we have seen. So what we're going to do is we're going to close the public hearing, go on to the next public hearing, then we'll go to the regular meeting.
Anyone on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom have any questions? Guess not.
He says no.
He says no? Okay. So if you'll take a seat, we'll get back to you in a few minutes. And the representative, ah, okay. You're the owner of the property.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you want to come up and present to the public what you're planning on doing down on Shore Road?
We are going to add a deck to the back of the house and it's covering up a lot of cement that's unsafe.
Does the public have any questions, comments? This is going quick. All right. We'll close the public hearing on Daniel Makwa, 135 Shore Road. All right. Mr. Gagnon, want to come back up? Oh, hang on, stop. My apologies. We're going to close the public hearing at this point, which is 5:33. Now I got to go to the next, next document. Welcome to the Main 7 meeting of the Wyman Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are being offered. If the board votes to go into executive session, the reason for the same shall be stated. Please speak, notify the board chair if you are having difficulty seeing a hearing. This meeting is being digitally recorded and broadcast for YouTube. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinance or ordinance. After the vote, board vote to the merits of this project, it will prepare a written opinion, which will be forwarded within seven days. This board works for a prepared agenda and will be considering this meeting in the following order. After the public hearing, we'll have the roll call. The regular meeting will be Patrick Gagnon, 154 Wilderness Way, map 3, lot 33, wants to build a vehicle inspection station which is currently used for his landscaping company. This use will continue. Then we'll have Daniel Makwa. Did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you. Pretty good. Not perfect. 135 Shore Road, map 17, lot 57. Ms. Makwa will discuss requests for the best practical location for the deck within the shoreland. After that, we'll have Carlisle Brooks Estates, map 4, lot 22, preliminary subdivision application prepared for public hearing on May 21st, 2025. Number 4, Taylor Ness, 1991 Alfred Road, map 3, lot 52, inquiry regarding businesses allowed on property. Then set the next agenda for the public hearing and meeting on May 21st, 2025. We'll do the minutes for, wow.
A whole bunch?
Yeah, March 19th, 2025, April 4th, 2025, April 16th, 2025, public hearing and meeting. Then review all business, which is the Harper Residential Subdivision, map 3, lot 87-3, and a portion of map 3, 87-2, Old Kennamuck Road, nine lot residential subdivision, final subdivision packet. Were you going to say something? At this time, I invite you to join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The law makes you wait. No, we have to have that open. Yes. That way the public can come in, they don't think it's a closed session. Can we have a roll call? Bill, single eight, single eight. Kelly Demers, 10 Partridge Way.
Cecile Dupree, 53 Chapel Show as well.
Kevin Veras, 64, Buggin Up Pond Road.
Okay, we have a full quorum, full slate of offices, just another notification to the public at hand. We have two openings for alternate members of the planning board. If you are interested in serving this wonderful community, please feel free to put in an application. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Gagnon, come back up, please. Okay, so you want to do just a private inspection, basically it's a private inspection station, but you need a permit to do it. And we're reviewing the sidewalk, all the building is up there. You have plenty of parking, which is something that we had requested. Unfortunately, there was snow on the ground, so we couldn't see the allotted parking spaces, but just by the number of vehicles there, they were sufficient. Lighting was all in place. You also have security cameras and everything else. Does the board have any questions? Kevin, you were at the sidewalk. And Tim, you were at the sidewalk. Bill, you were not there? Correct. And Cecile, you were not there?
No.
Okay. Did you have any issues with?
No.
And it's back far enough, you're not going to have a million and one cars, you're not planning on advertising it, putting a sign at the street. There's just your private landscaping company in there. And it is beneficial to you to service your own vehicles with a qualified mechanic, with your own inspection station, and running up to Sanford to whoever. So you're losing time and money and labor and fuel. Make sense? All right. Parking spaces. That is the right title. That's waivers, that's exhibits. All right. And it looks like we have deemed the application, there was waivers that were submitted and approved. Not requiring the traffic study because it's not good for traffic. I will entertain a motion that we review section 836B, 1 through 16. Do I hear motion? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor that the applicant, it's been, the preliminaries done and moving on to the final? All opposed? All right, I'm going to grab the cough drop because my throat is getting dry from talking. All right. Number 1, will meet the definition of the use of zoning district requirements and any other requirements set forth in this ordinance. A inspection station is allowed, building's there. Did you have something to say? Oh, I thought you had your hand up? Okay. Do we have a motion that the applicant meets criteria for number 1?
I move that the applicant has fulfilled the requirements for application for standard number 1.
Tim, second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Meets number 1. Number 2, will not have significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of the abutting properties as a result of noise, vibrations, fumes, odor, dust, light, glare, traffic, or other causes. The building and the vehicles are already there, it is set well back from the road. I don't foresee, unless you decide to later on, go out and open it to the public, any more traffic or any more noise or anything else. So hearing that, I will entertain a motion that the applicant has fulfilled the requirements for number 2.
So moved.
Good, so moved. We got a second from Tim. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Number 2 is approved. Number 3, will not have a significant adverse effect on adjacent or nearby property values. You're out in the woods, you're by yourself, the nearest one is 500 feet away. So I'll make a motion that the applicant has met the criteria for number 3.
Second.
Cecile, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. Number 4, will not create a hazard to pedestrian, deticular traffic, or significant traffic congestion. Is no one going to your business, other than your employees? Maybe a family member, too. So I'll entertain a motion that the applicant has fulfilled the requirements for number 4. Tim, second. First. Kevin, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. Number 5, will not result in fire danger. You're not proposing having underground storage tanks, flammable containers, hazardous materials, or anything on site as required by your permit for the inspection station. You're in the middle of nowhere, surrounded by gravel, unless you plan on adding brilliant landscaping that is seasonally tinder-dried, which will cause California effect. Just checking. California's going up again. I'll make a motion that the applicant meets the criteria for number 5.
Second.
Cecile, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 5 is approved. Number 6, will not result in flood hazard or flood damage, drainage problems, ground or surface water contamination, or soil erosion. You're on a gravel pit. You're on gravel. So we're not looking at flooding, it's great soil drainage. I'll entertain a motion, the applicant has met the criteria for number 6.
So moved.
Tim, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approved. Number 7, will not create a safety hazard because of inadequate access to the site or building for emergency vehicles. While it is a pretty long private driveway and road, there is, two vehicles can easily pass by, it appears to be very well maintained. You do or do not have a fence at the entrance of it. You don't have a gate, so we're not concerned about putting a knock box on the gate to allow for emergency personnel.
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion that the applicant meets number 7? Tim motions. Kevin, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 8, has proposed exterior lightings that will not create hazards to motorists traveling on adjacent public streets as adequate for the safety of occupants and the users of the site, and will not damage the value or diminish usability of adjacent properties. The lightings are pre-existing on the building, they're all downward facing. If someone is seeing that lighting, then they're too close to your personal property.
I move that the applicant meets the requirements for number 8.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's proved. Number 9, makes provisions for buffers and on-site landscaping which provide adequate protection to the neighbors' properties from detrimental features of the development. The applicant shall provide a plan prepared by a registered landscaper architect or other qualified professional approved by the planning board. You do plan on using some natural landscaping around the property for minor beautifications.
Nature of the business.
Yeah. I was going to, I think it's qualified to design.
I think he's qualified for that one.
I'll make a motion, he meets the criteria for number 9.
Second.
Cecile, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry for the chug on down. My apologies. Number 10, makes provisions for vehicular parking, loading, unloading, as well as vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and on adjacent public streets, which would neither create hazards or safety nor impose significant burdens on public facilities. The driveway parking lot is a very large turnaround, adequate parking for probably several 18-wheelers at one time. You go from your private to a secondary public road with plenty of access to the primary road, which is Route 111 with considerable sightline, if I remember correctly. So I will make a motion that the applicant meets the criteria for number 10. Tim, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 11, makes adequate provisions for the disposal of wastewater and solid waste for the prevention of groundwater surface water contamination.
The use does not have waste inspection.
The building is already pre-approved structure. You know, he's just adding ancillary use to it. Primary use is the storage, maintenance of his vehicles at.
So I move that the applicant is condition of 11.
Number 11. Tim, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 12, makes adequate provisions to control erosion and sedimentation. There's.
Grass, you have grass already, they've stated that.
Yep, he does have some landscape, little bit of landscaping around the building. Again, it's the natural flora and fauna for the most part. So there's not going to be distributing anything that is not already existing.
So standard number 12 is satisfied?
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 13, makes adequate provisions to handle stormwater runoff and other drainage on site. Existing site, nothing changes. Drainage appeared quite adequate of the time we were present for the sidewalk. I'll make a motion that the applicant meets the criteria for number 13. Tim, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 14, provides for a water supply that meets the demands and provisions proposed use and meets the need for fire protection purposes. One thing I didn't ask is your building have sprinklers in it or significant fire extinguishers?
Fire extinguisher.
And I presume that that building has been inspected by the fire chief? Or is that something that falls under your purview, Rebecca?
It would be my purview, but I believe the previous code officer approved all of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's existing, I'm just.
Yep.
So I'll entertain a motion, the applicant meets 14.
So moved.
Cecile. Tim, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 15, makes adequate provisions for the transportation, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances and materials as defined by the state and federal law, the storage of chemicals, explosives, or hazardous items as defined by the National Fire Protection Association Code, 704, Class 3 and 4 materials are not permitted.
The use is inspection?
Vehicle inspection.
And there's no hazardous substances?
Right. You're only inspecting.
So I move that standard number 15 is satisfied.
Oh, Tim, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 16, will not have an adverse impact on significant scenic vistas or on significant wildlife habitat, which could be avoided had a reasonable modification of the plan. I'll tell you, when we went for the sightline, site inspection, I looked over and I saw a beautiful deer bounding right through the property. I don't think that we are endangering any significant wildlife habitat. So matter of fact, you mentioning how they cross your property all the time. I'll make a motion that the applicant meets number 16.
Second.
Cecile, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. Do we have a motion that the applicant has fulfilled the requirements for the site plan review, the preliminary, as well as the final?
So moved.
We got a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? Any questions, queries, comments, concerns? Here are none. All in favor, the application is complete. All opposed? Congratulations. We'll get the notification out to you. And I think it's what, 15 days? Something like that?
We're running a little behind still. Be patient with us.
That's not real. Five years.
No, no, no. All right, you're all set.
We'll go as quick as we can.
No. I don't think so. Nope, this was, we have plans.
We do have plans for signatures.
All right.
Yeah.
We'll get them at the end of the meeting, don't let us forget.
Don't forget.
What is that, like a bag?
I want to get rid of that, but yeah.
Oh, thank you. I am looking for my checklist for Shore Road. Rule number 1, never go through your files before a meeting, because you might accidentally take something out. I know what we're dealing with. Good evening. How do you pronounce the last name?
I'm sorry to ask. Like, his brothers all pronounce it differently, too. So I say Mark Court.
Mark Court?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good evening, Ms. Mark Court. Please present what you are planning on doing or would like to do over at 135 Shore Road, map 17, lot 57.
To add a deck, and it's going to cover up a cement, it's like a cement pad, kind of deck-ish thing, and there's like some cement stairs. And it's just very unsafe, so we want to put a nice deck on top of it.
I know one of the things that we noticed at the site, sidewalk, and that is a requirement from the shoreland zoning ordinance is we need a survey by a registered surveyor indicating the 75-foot mark from the water's edge. You know, a hand drawn, a measure with a tape measure. Sadly, it doesn't, doesn't cut. So that is something that we required, we mentioned it to Tom. I know.
There is a, you know, a site plan in the package. There's a site from previously.
But that's, there's no dimensions, there's no distances. Part of that survey would be the setbacks required by zoning, even though this building is grandfathered, you're not going to get 40 feet back, but we still need that, all that on a registered survey, or survey prepared by a registered surveyor.
So, okay, we can take the one we have, and because I don't think that guy is doing it anymore, he did it. And you just want measurements on there, is that what you want?
You need a measurement from the high water mark on the lake to the 75 feet back to indicate where that falls.
Okay.
Because without knowing, you could, where you want to be could be, let's throw out numbers, 60 feet, or it could be 76 feet back. One will determine how or if things can be allowed to move forward.
So with the best practical location and the 30% over, how does that work?
That'll all be looked at, reviewed, and taken into consideration, but without the survey stating this much, you know, you're this close, we can't move forward. So we need to have a survey prepared by.
Are you still planning to take out that concrete sidewalk that goes down to the line?
Well, I was worried about removing it with the runoff and what's going to hold the hill in, so I was hoping, you know, if we could cover it and put plants over it, like put some dirt over it. I'm just nervous that if we remove it, what would happen to the land?
You'd have to plant.
Well, you'd have to put something back.
You'd have to put something down.
Yeah. But that's, that in itself is making it non-conforming. So if that was going to be removed to make it more conforming, that might allow leeway on other things that would not be conforming.
You're talking about just the stairs?
The walkway going down whenever it is.
Yeah, the stairs going down?
Yeah. Just curious. What's currently encroaching? Yeah.
Just the walkway itself?
One of the things that's going to be, need to be on that is the, we know there's a shed down by the lake that's been there forever, but we need to show how much that encroaches over the line as well.
There is a marking, because it was surveyed before.
Yeah, but we, we don't have it right now. It's one of the things.
Do you have the plan, you can see where it is?
Been cleaning up my packet and my briefcase. I went and this folder's done, that folder's done, I must have accident. Like, this is what we have right here, which was a past surveyor, but we're not seeing the 75-foot setback line, which is absolutely key and critical in this instance. It's the biggest stopping block that we have at this moment. Other than that, there's a lot of things that can be done and worked around. As I had mentioned to Tom, another thing that would really be nice is the surveyed location, exactly where those stone retaining walls are, because that has already been, the land has already been disturbed and improved, so that may work toward you when you want to build that, because you will not be encroaching beyond existing improvements. You have step terrace landscaping.
Yeah.
Where you have that concrete walkway that leads aside, then you have a little stone wall.
Yeah.
Then you go down a couple steps and to your left, you have a stone wall, retaining wall. Where is that from that, from the edge of the wall to high water mark? Because that shows already improvements to the, to the landscape, which could work to your benefit to say you are not encroaching any further than that, which has already been encroached upon. But we need to see where that is. Is it making sense?
Yeah. Basically, what you're saying is you leave the 75-foot mark on the survey.
Exactly. And your surveyor should know if he's did.
We're going to have to find the coordinates.
It's going to need to show across the property, 75 feet from the water, so it may not be a straight line. It may be conca.
Yeah, because it's got to go from high water mark. So if, even though you have a point, it may go out further. If you have a little 10-foot finger walk in, it goes from that, that closest point. And a good surveyor will know all this and just tell them you need a shoreland survey.
So, yeah, okay.
It gets frustrating. We understand.
Yeah, so just trying to cover up the cement that's there, that's super unsafe, is what we're trying to do, to just make it safer, yeah.
Right, but you want to go out, was it 12 feet they want to go out?
Yeah, because like the deck we have right now is 12 feet deep, and when you have the table and the chairs to be able to walk behind it.
Correct.
It's tight, it's tight.
Yeah. One of the things that is.
If I went lower, I went less, you know.
It'd be a little bit tight, but one of the things we have to deal with, and strictly adhere, is the shoreland zoning rules. You know, this is, it's not something we can arbitrarily and randomly say, eh, forget about it, you seem like nice people, we want to help. It's, it's the rules that we have to play with. It's, it's the rules that we have to play with. And we have no control over it.
Okay.
But that survey will tell us a boatload of information that we need to have for the best practical location.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, good luck. All right. Carlisle Brook Estates, Met Ball Lot 22, preliminary subdivision application. What's our time? You're going to be on... Oh, I haven't even got my books up yet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
They are here. They were invited here so that you could review the sidewalk notes, because they were not here at last meeting when you were reviewing them.
Straight acceptance. And subdivision standards. Do we have comments regarding the sidewalk? I know Kevin, you were there, I was there. Bill, you were not there. Tim, you were there. You were there, yes.
I was not, no.
No, you weren't. Are you sure? Like, she was the only one? It wasn't?
It snowed, it snowed.
You were there in spirit.
There you go.
There we go. That's her story, and she's sticking with it, and unacceptable.
I'm clairvoyant.
Yeah.
Director Eric Sauer, from Moss Engineering, is here on behalf of the applicant. And there was some confusion about us showing up last time. I thought you guys told us not to come, so we didn't. So I apologize if we misinterpreted that.
I don't remember any... That was a long time ago. I don't remember any of us saying that it was or wasn't, so it's...
Well, we're here now, so we know that you guys might have some questions. And we're going to show you what we're thinking about doing to the project as we move forward.
All right, now, just to be clear, we can only go with what was presented prior, not any potential changes.
But I would like to give you guys a taste of some preview just for a few seconds, if you don't mind that.
That would have to be up to the majority of the board.
Okay.
One of the things, a couple of things we need to see is on the surveys, we discuss it over at the sidewalk where the new road's going in, the sight line from the entrance. That has to be...
That, that's been in the plan since the beginning. I don't know if you guys saw that.
Uh, I don't think we saw that on our plans.
You can go to C2.
These old eyes.
So that does show the site distance. And as you recall from standing out there, it was obvious that we've got plenty available in both directions.
Because that was one of the things, there are buildings or houses and kids on there. Last thing we need is...
Oh yeah, somebody coming around the corner and pulling out, absolutely.
They're stopped at the end of the private road, pick up the kids, and a dump truck. You know, picking on anyone. A dump truck comes around that corner in the winter time, and we have a tragedy that no one wants to have. Okay, that was the sight line?
Yep, sight lines are good. You guys had a question about back lots?
Kevin, you want to say something?
Um, just to further on the sightlines, do you have any information on the site distance from the existing Carlisle Brook, since that road is going to be utilized for one of the lots?
From the intersection of Carlisle to Walker?
Um, no, from the end of Carlisle Brook at Walker, the site distance on that one.
Right here.
Yes.
I do not read our survey stocks right here.
Okay.
There's a slight curve there, and we can look at it for you if that's the case, but it is in existing condition.
Yes, but, but it's a new lot.
It's a new lot, but we can build a house right there right now on Carlisle Brook Road for this lot. So the end result doesn't change, but we can look at it.
Yes, but the, this is for approval for a lot that's going to be serviced off that road. So we would need some site distance information from there.
This one, this one, we're going to stick it up at access to Walker. But this one would access up to the new road.
Yes.
But we can take a look. There is another lot down the way, this one, that is currently under construction at the moment. But we can take a look at this site distance.
The other thing that was a big concern is access hammerhead turnaround for municipal services, mainly fire department.
Yeah.
I know Fire Chief, he is a huge proponent of hammerhead turnarounds. So that if something happens, their crew can get in there, turn around, because the last thing we want is to have the ladder truck backing all the way up from the access point of lot four or lot six. You know, like, how many feet is that? 400-plus feet, almost 500 feet.
Well, I think that a potential solution here is to have the frontage for that lot off of Carlisle Brook, and then access it from an easement over the lot up front. So the driveway comes out on Walker. So we don't have to worry about Carlisle Brook Road at all. So that whole thing comes out of the equation.
That's just something that if it does happen, they're going to want, we're going to want...
Yeah, he's going to want to see it.
The Fire Chief to step up and go...
That, that road's a dead end now, right? Carlisle Brook doesn't go anywhere.
Technically, it goes all the way to the old Kennamuck Road.
Oh, okay.
It's a paper street.
Okay, all right.
Paper.
It's not drivable unless you've got some serious four-wheel drive.
No, there's, there's, that's probably been abandoned 800 years ago. But it's still...
The, the right away still.
Yeah, access. Because there's a couple owners that live past that, that own a box tracks and land, that may in the future decide that they wish to develop that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll look at access through the front lot, and that might take the whole question out of the front of this here.
Yep.
Because that, yeah. Anyone else have any comments about the sidewalk or concerns, questions, queries? I will say that we did not walk all the way down the proposed road. A, the weather was not advantageous to us, and from the topography, it was pretty self-explanatory where the road was going to be.
Yeah. We, we took the liberty of walking it, which is why, yeah, which is why we're going to change it. Sometimes we don't actually see it until we actually put the stakes out there.
Yeah.
So seeing it where it's really going to land on the face of the earth is kind of important. So it's like, we saw that that day, and that's why we're going to change it going forward. But there was a question on back lots. You guys need a formal request from us to approve that? And I have that, if you guys are willing to take a look at that today or not.
Yes, because you're creating two back lots.
Two back lots.
And actually, the lot one, technically it's three back lots, because number one doesn't have sufficient road frontage to meet the current standard.
That is correct.
So we're looking at three back lots requesting that.
Yep, and the future condition will only be two, which is why the request in front of you references that. But I go through the four criteria that you have in your ordinance under 817 with subdivision standards. It's a unique situation where the topography rocks way off in the back, and also the presence of ledge. Walking the centerline, there's a lot of rock out there, which is why we're going to move this road and change it. And then, of course, not extending the road. We've got plenty of land, obviously. We can extend the road all day, you know, plenty of frontage. But what's the point? Is build a road just for the sake of having a road at that point? It doesn't make any sense at all, plus we have to blast. And of course, three back lots are allowed. In this case, we're talking about two. Which I will show you real briefly, if you guys need to make a motion to talk about it. But we're looking at changing what was four lots into three, two back lots, and a significantly shorter road that was slid over to be on top of that fence road. And so this goes to a, there's a steep drop-off right about here. So that saves a lot of runs, saves a lot of blasting, a lot of environmental impact, and also remains a lot. So that's the proposal that we're going to submit for final. Right now, we have to talk about the learning.
What was existing as of the time that we went... And I understand, yeah, because that's going to bring up other questions, at least for me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just two back lots.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I got to put that out of my, yeah, out of my sight for now. That doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist. I'll take it down anyway.
Thank you.
Back lots have to have access to a publicly accepted road for private way leading to a publicly accepted road by way of a private easement.
Which is...
Which is on the plan right now.
No, now lot six would have access to the private Carlisle Brook, which is in public access from Walker Road. You would need to speak with the owners of Carlisle Brook to see about the private road maintenance agreement as it currently stands.
I believe, yeah. I don't know if it's been submitted, you guys, but we do have it. So if, if a lot does access Carlisle Brook, it would definitely have to be part of that. And there are provisions in that agreement to expand it as necessary as additional lots along that.
One of the things I was having concerns about is there's so many properties on there that at what point are they going from a private road to potentially a minor...
Yeah.
Well, from a minor subdivision road to a major subdivision road, even though there are other owners on there. So that was one of my concerns.
I think by extending an easement to Walker and then putting a note on it, eliminating access to Carlisle Brook for lot six, I think that solves that problem. So there'll be no new, no new curb cuts to Carlisle Brook Road at all.
There's wetland there. We'd already discussed one, preliminary.
Yeah.
I'm making a drive-through, but the wetland is...
Yeah, that would be, but the wetland's in the way, yeah.
Elevated bridge.
Yeah, right. They were cheap, sure.
I see them do that stuff in China all the time. Oh, what they get away with. All right. Look what's this. The thing with these packets, they get so many different pages.
Yeah, the only thing we were missing on the original application package was the approval of the erosion control plan by the Jordan County Soil and Water, something or other. I don't know if they exist. They have a website. I sent them an email, didn't go anywhere, bounced back. I called them and left messages, and no one's returned my calls. So I don't know how to go forward with that.
How do we deal with that and the last one, Rebecca?
I hope they did get information from them. It was the other one. Those main ones.
Yeah, the main ones.
That one's gone for sure.
Jordan County, this is Sprayville one, I think.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Like, they've never got back to me. I'll keep trying.
Yeah.
Just wanted to let you guys know that.
We know with COVID and all that, everything is... No one's still recovered yet. Do we want to move forward and have them present their revised plan at the next meeting?
Their public hearing is next meeting for their preliminary. It's already scheduled. The notice is out. The letters have been notified.
So I've got to talk about this at that hearing, but if you guys are okay, I can also talk about the new one as a follow-up. Just, just so the public is aware of the change.
How about after the public hearing, when we go into the meeting, that we can talk about any potential revisions?
I would say after the public hearing.
Yeah, because the public has to deal with what we were presented prior. And we can discuss any proposed changes that were made based on the recommendations of the sidewalk in the original plan.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, we're losing a lot, so I don't think anyone's going to get, you know, hard work.
So prepare your revised plan.
Yep.
And be prepared to discuss at the public hearing this plan
Yep.
that was presented to us, as well as the full revised plan. And hopefully you'll hear back from the soils and water DEP at the alphabet soup. Board have any other thing? Bill?
I'm just thinking, if you talk... What state agencies do you need to talk to?
Nobody. We've got to submit a PBR to DEP, and that's it. And that's, that's a notification thing that goes in, and two weeks later you can start working.
Yeah. You might want to find somebody to call and say, "How do I get ahold of these people at this other place?"
I'll, I'll keep trying.
Someone will know.
Someone, someone's got to know, exactly. I got, I got to avoid, uh, that sounded like an old-school voicemail, to believe it or not. Maybe an answering machine, actually, but who knows?
I find it amazing they're open from nine to five, but you can only call from nine to 12. You know, it's like, okay.
They do spend a lot of time in the field, especially in the springtime.
Didn't the gentleman from Sightline that did the other subdivision find the back door or something? It may be beneficial to contact Sightline.
Yeah, I contacted him.
He found a contact.
Okay. I'll keep digging.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he was having trouble, and it was like, "We got to get this done. We're getting nowhere." And all of a sudden, he...
It's Joe, Joe Martin at Sightline's in...
Is he still waiting for it, though?
No, that was...
Yeah, he's still waiting for there.
He's still waiting for, I mean, contacting him. He's still waiting.
He's still waiting? He got the contact, but he's not got the documentation.
He submitted the, the applications or whatever to them. He's still waiting for their...
But didn't he get ahold of somebody finally?
Right, yeah.
I don't know who it was.
I mean, these are stamped plans anyway. Do we need to do this? Is there possibly for a waiver? If it becomes sort of an issue where we can't really presolve it?
It would be before the finalization, it would be subject to the final approval and the receipt of that paperwork. Basically, as it's happened, it's done in the past. It, it's kind of like the bond you're going to need to, you know, to present when you do the development.
Yeah.
If you don't get that document from DEP, whatever, then Rebecca comes over with her wonderful string of yellow flagging and says,
"Stop."
Exactly. Which you don't want to do.
No.
She doesn't want to do it. We don't want to do it.
But the board could waive it, though, if they felt, you guys felt, you know, minimal to that.
I don't know if they could waive that.
That's one thing. In 11 years, I don't think I've seen a single waiver for that requirement.
Wow, okay, all right. Well, somebody's obviously finding these guys, and so I'll, I'll find a way.
I'm sorry, can you just explain the waiver, or the requirement?
It's, it's, I'll explain that.
Basically, DEP comes in and says, "You're not going to have adverse effect on the environment," you know. Essentially. And again, I've seen them require the reconstruction moving of a stream because there was a tree frog that lived on that property before it was being developed.
We don't have to go to that depth of review with them, thank God. This is just for erosion control, and that's it.
Yeah, exactly.
A little bit less, yeah, less heavy-duty than that.
Right, but it, it's one of those technicalities that's in there.
Okay. Well, so somebody's obviously found these guys before, so I'll, I'll reach out to Joe, and I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, because with all the development going on in the state, A, they got to be up to their ears
They must be.
in paperwork. I mean, just look at Westbrook. Fastest-growing community in the state. They're getting it done somehow, so.
Well, a lot of towns don't, well, a lot of towns do their own review. They've got their own engineering, but they don't go to York County or Cumberland, in the case of Westbrook. They've got their own engineering, but they don't go to York County or Cumberland, in the case of Westbrook. I'll get it done. I'll find it. I'll find it. They're out there somewhere.
Yeah, so we'll see, what, on the 21st?
Yep.
All right, fantastic.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. No problem. We're here to assist.
All righty. Things going actually pretty good.
Good sliced pizza?
There's that, there's the meat.
Everything just clears.
It's okay. I just hate the science.
Yeah, that was weird.
We are going on to Taylor Ness. You shooting the lastix at me or pins? That's all right.
Keeping you on the toes.
All right, Taylor Ness.
Yes.
This is Taylor Ness?
Uh, we do. Please present what you would like. What information do you like to respond from us?
My name is Jim Longan, and I'm here to assist Taylor. I've been in discussion with him, and we have contacted Rebecca, the code office person, to investigate further a property that Taylor has under contract to purchase at 1991 Route 111 there, Alpha Group. And so Taylor's here tonight to sound the board out. We'd like to get some feedback from you as to his idea, his concept. We don't have even a sketch plan application tonight. We don't follow that process officially. We prepared this plan for your brief review tonight with Rebecca's guidance regarding front setbacks, side setbacks, and the like. Taylor is hoping to propose a 7,000 square foot commercial building there, 75100, and associated parking and access directly off of Route 111. He has already contacted DOT, and they have given him the preliminary approval to put the driveway as we've shown it. We took a, I'm with a company called Longview Partners, and I'm a wetland scientist and a soil scientist, and I'm also a septic system designer. So Taylor called me right out of the gate to make sure that this was a property that didn't have natural resource issues that would be prohibitive to what he's proposing. Following that, we felt we would visit you folks and see what the array of conditions and limitations there might be for commercial.
What is the size of that lot?
It's 5.663 meters, I believe. A bit about five and a half.
Okay.
It does have apparently the correct amount or the adequate amount of frontage and depth to meet the standard, I think, for a front lot in the commercial zone. Your commercial zone along 111 is 1,500 feet wide, deep, describes a front lot versus a back lot in the commercial zone. This would only be a front lot. There is no adequate land to have what might be defined as a rear lot. I think one of the questions that might come from our side of the podium tonight, I think the best fit, when Taylor described to Rebecca the use of the property consistent with his business, business contractor was the definition, felt like it was the closest fit, which is a business engaged in the provision of service off premises, but which has an office and equipment materials stored on premises. So Taylor has a septic tank pumping business. The pump trucks come and go frequently. Those drivers are not at the facility for the day. He would have a limited number of full-time employees on the site. I think two or three. Is it limited to three?
Number two is limited to three, but number one doesn't say.
One more question that was a question I had, and maybe as we get deeper into this, again, tonight was just a sort of a conceptual feeling out the board. Does this seem like a proposal that you could look at under site plan review and then find a means to approve? Provided, obviously, we need all the conditions and requirements. Working closely with Rebecca, we would like to perhaps develop a site plan in a bit more detail and come back to you with that.
So if this is the property I'm thinking about, Route 111, westbound, east, westbound, right-hand side, top of no moderately steep curve, correct? With the old channeling fence across that
Starts?
on the uphill slope. Yeah, I have serious concerns about a site line, you know.
Hence he went to DOT first. That's the point. They had similar concerns. Taylor Richmond had a different location he wanted, which was less problematic with respect to blasting. DOT said no.
Yeah.
And so they've already made the adjustment based out of your concern. They wouldn't have given him a nod if we didn't meet the state DOT standard.
Right.
Given that it is that sloping curve.
Steep access coming in and you're
You have a double whammy there, because we talk about site lines being challenging due to horizontal curvature, but oftentimes a vertical curvature can be as difficult as the horizontal bend.
Right.
So where exactly on 111 is that?
Right at the height of the land.
I'm trying to think of any land.
If you were headed to Sanford on the right.
Before Howitt Route?
Yep. There was a trailer, an old gentleman had a trailer camper out there.
Okay.
Sitting on the right-hand side. He's the
It's elevated.
Yes.
To meet the DOT requirements on the first, how many feet it is, 3% grade.
Yeah.
We're gonna go right through that ledge, but I would just carry the road up in very gradual, you know, to the center of the lot and then and then switch back. You didn't there, so it wouldn't be a steep
The idea would be to cut the face of the ledge, so you're going kind of level.
So you're doing considerable plaster to come down.
The DOT, the DOT would want your approach somewhat level.
For sure.
Yeah.
For sure. And the curvature at the entrance would have to be adequate also to allow radius view once you hit the intersection. Of course, site distance is not standing there. It's, you know, measured from where you would be sitting in the vehicle.
Yeah.
Standing and back from the edge of
And we all know that everyone goes exactly 50 miles an hour on that road.
Oh, sure.
I don't think blasting will be an issue where the DOT market is very sharely. And you can see across the street, the same ledge.
Digger man by trade, he's gonna know what you can dig and what you're asking to blast. What's gonna take, what's gonna take a big machine?
And that would be only used for vehicle storage, maintenance, no well, this will come later on, it's gonna say no discharge of slug septic waste at all?
No. No, so we so, yeah, it's essentially heated truck storage for the winter is why we need the square footage.
Taylor's business has switched some from strictly septic tank pumping to hydro vac use for storm drains and so forth. Some of the municipal contracts. And in those cases, those are trucks that do need to be kept inside of a heated space to be able to be active at all in the colder winter months. I will seek a spot out there adequate for a septic system. I haven't done it yet, but I am confident, having walked the site with Taylor, that it meets his needs and that we will have septic suitability. There's some 20 feet or so of elevation change on the top of this property, all the way down to the outer edges of it, so this that we will find a level terrace that we can work with for suitability out there. While ledge is very evident in front of the property, as you step away from that ledge and go down over the slope, the soil's deepened right up, and you shouldn't have too many problems that way. No real worry over wetlands or vernal pools out there to speak of. I have just closed out, wow, boy, this is probably my 22nd season of vernal pool analysis and study. Nothing residual in that here. I could show you some beauties, though, down in Kennyville. What else? I think that's, we did, I did a basic amount of calculation to suspect that his building and his parking will fall somewhere between the half acre, the 20,000 square feet that is required for that permit by rural notification for stormwater to DEP versus should we get anywhere near an acre of impervious with the building and the parking? We would then be with a full stormwater permit to DEP. But we won't know that until we get back to you with a final plan, exactly what our square footage impacts might be.
So you've already found a space contracted two, is what you say you think you fall under. The DEP, no, DOT approval for the curb cut, modified curb cut.
Why don't you last word yourself, Dave? I got an order from 2016 that I've had anymore. I'm gonna buy the book.
Yes, it's right online.
I'm an old school guy. I don't want to buy the book. I don't want anyone to buy me. I'm not a scroller. I'm sorry. I'm a page flipper.
Print to PDF. Isn't that the greatest?
No, not really.
I'll stop and buy it.
Comments, Cecile? Concerns, questions?
No, did you find that land use would be
Oh, that's what I was looking for when I was going through and trying to pay attention at the same time and look at the definitions which should be at the back.
Yeah, and I don't see it there. Definition was not really there.
We found the definition for business contractor.
Maybe it's business.
Business contractor.
Yeah.
Page 72, business engaged in the provision of a service off premises, but which has an office and equipment, materials and storage on premises, limited to three employees, including the owner.
And I guess the clarification I might like to get from the board tonight, and I know this would include the code officer's interpretation, but I'd like to suggest that we would be talking about three onsite full-time employees, including the owner, as opposed to the drivers that are gonna park the truck and jump in a different truck and go. Because those employees are not gonna be present on the, on the property for more than a few minutes at a time.
It doesn't say, it doesn't give the limited restrictions of on the property. It says three.
So here is one of the issues that we have with our ordinance, because on the land use table, there is a business contractor one and two. And one is, I'm assuming would be a small business contractor, because it is allowed in the residential district, in any of our districts. The business contractor two is not allowed in residential, so, and now usually the two indicates it's a larger business. I don't know if it would be limited to three. I'm assuming it is not in our definitions.
Counterintuitive. If it's a larger business, why would it be limited to three?
If it's commercial.
I'm wondering if there's not confusion over your definition of of commercial one and two, based on how far from Route 1 is. And is that being confused with this other one and two for contractor?
That's why we want to find the definition of contractor one, contractor two.
So if I'm in a residential area, I can have five employees.
No, if you're in residential, you could only have the three. No, actually, yes. Because you would be limited to three employees. It would be a smaller business. I mean, a
The number one
Because it's allowed.
And what's the zoning of this one?
This is commercial.
No, it's not.
It's not commercial.
General.
It's general.
General, well, so general purpose is still allowed. Business contractor two.
That stops roughly at Jackson's Corner. Where the three-phase stops is where the commercial stops.
But it is allowed in the general purpose contractor two. But this is, this was on one of the, remember the list that I compiled of inconsistencies?
Yes.
This is one of those in the definitions.
Well, that's what we're trying to locate is where in the definition of where in residential permitted.
See, it would make sense to me if you're limited in the number of employees as a condition, I'll use residential zone. But once you're in a general purpose or commercial zone, that's based on a comprehensive plan, probably, where you're targeting the business to go. And it actually implying to C2 or the larger of the facilities, 2,500 square feet or larger, it's counterintuitive to suggest you're limited to three employees.
That's why, you can always request a waiver, giving explanation as to the justification for a request.
Well, I, and I'm prepared to do that if your interpretation, in fact, is is that, is that it is limited to three employees.
Which doesn't make sense, but that's how it's written.
There's businesses all over town that are not even in, in the commercial zone, and I'm like, one, three employees.
Why would they be one and two? What would be the difference?
Come on.
Why what?
There, in our land use table, we have a contractor, business contractor one, and a, and business contractor two. So where is it defined that there's a difference between the two? Why would we need two?
My, my guess of why there was originally one and two is why it had contractor one. Small one, two-man, three-man shop builder, plumber, electrician. You know, easy owner, his wife does the books, and he's got two people on his vehicles. Fine, great. Contractor number two is we have, I'm just trying, first group that comes to my mind, Bowley Building. Why? I don't know. They have a large office. They have a full crew. They have their office crew.
That's where the stories.
I thought they were on Group 110.
Well, that's all sorts across the street. That's where Bowley is. That's big commercial business.
Because I was with Hancock for seven years.
I can see it. Oh, I can see it.
I thought we were sure that was where. Yeah, so that would, my interpretation, contractor two, a large commercial with office equipment.
It sounds to me what he wants to do is very similar to what Patrick's landscaping is doing right in the same neighborhood.
That's
How many employees does he have?
I don't know.
That was my question.
So he has more than three employees?
I don't know. That, that building was approved.
You didn't even ask.
That was approved before we
Two would be the
I'm thinking that somewhere there was a definition of contractor two that was dropped.
Logically, I see that this would be a smaller operation.
To be honest
I'm wondering if the number two under the business contractor definition, the number two, which limits it to three employees, is meant to go with only the smaller building or business contractor, you know, under, under the commercial and industrial facility definition, where you got a one and two, and it's based on square footage. It seems to me that that second inclusion under business contractor one and two, the number two that limits it to three employees, is really only supposed to be applied to that
With contractor one.
Correct.
Because contractor one is allowed in
I think you got a number two.
In residential, and contractor two is not.
You want to say that condition number two required for that business contractor one definition really is limited to just that number one definition and not number two.
Something else you can ask for a waiver.
Right, and I think we need a little bit of guidance from the municipal attorney as to why there is difference and discrepancy.
That would help us, because then if we did need to request a waiver, I could be much more specific and accurate.
Right. Because we don't want to say, oh, this is, because we can't find it.
I don't want to ask a waiver just because it doesn't seem right. That's not a justification.
Right.
I need to do better.
And we don't want to put a potential stop on something because in a retransmission, a reprinting, that something was missed and it hasn't been picked up because
I've been involved with a lot of ordinances and working with a lot of county offices for a lot of time, including my own, when I was on the planning board in Buxton. And occasionally, the stuff needs to be rewritten. Sometimes the wording is confusing. I sat in your chair for many an occasion and said, board members, this is not well written. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do?
They're living, breathing documents that we scratch our head and go, oh, we gotta read.
It's important to recognize that they're living, breathing, because they can't stay static.
Oh, God, no.
Times change. Anyway, we would love guidance with regards specifically to that number.
Exactly, I I hope.
Aside from that, you haven't heard a whole lot of negative input.
When this was first presented to me, and I happened to drive by and I went, oh, crap, that is a steep incline that is around the corner.
What you're concerned was predominantly access to the site.
Right. And, you know, traffic without knowing anything other than there's a potential commercial development on this site. I was, how are A trucks going to slow down and exit? You know, with if they're eastbound and they got across westbound, and then they gotta go up that. Where was in?
It's not that different from the big landscape place down the way that sells turf. There's a lot of parts to Route 111 that are present challenges.
Yeah.
The fact that it's strictly east-west and the sun angles are terrible in the morning and the afternoon.
As you're probably well aware of, for the longest time, that was the deadliest stretcher road, 11-mile stretcher road in the state of Maine.
I just fixed 6,000 bucks worth of damage at the north end of Limerick Road where it was coming out. There's someone T-bowling coming out. They were looking at their phone. All that aside, Taylor's trucks are really big and very obvious. And to hit one of them, you'd be pretty done.
There is better visibility than I expected standing. There's an orange arrow in the road. You can see, looking back towards benefit, you can see down in that.
Yeah.
That's that's the, you know, the westbound is slightly worse for certain reasons coming out than eastbound.
Hypothetically, worst-case scenario, for whatever reason, are yours triaxes?
Some, a lot of wheelers.
Yeah. You got, well, now they got the flotation drivers and all, whatever. Hypothetically, you got a fully loaded truck heading westbound at seven o'clock in the morning, sunrise, and you have a fully loaded 18-wheeler, you know, 80,000, 90,000 pounds, and you come up and that sun hits right there. Is your vehicle gonna be fast enough to get in, out, and out of the way? You know, is there gonna be sufficient time for this guy, who may or may not be either starting his run or ending his run for the day, have sufficient time to recognize and break? That's.
Mr. Chairman, I can only hope that our D O T is trustworthy enough to give us
Oh, yeah, that's.
The right information for a state road. That's the, that's what you're hoping for.
Yep, that's that's my big concern.
This is a whole lot trickier when we're on a town road and I'm approaching a public works guy, and we're still doing site distance the very same way. The issues are still the same.
Yeah.
We have some level of comfort, because we have a state agency much more gifted in, you know, site access and and site distance that's safe than we.
Yeah.
So I would hope that would leave some of your concerns. And the fact that he's gonna make major changes to that layout should make it more favorable.
If the proposed use is within the ordinance and we're gonna be trying to seek different contract, what specifically contractor one, contractor two, the difference is? If the proposed use is in compliance with the ordinance, the biggest thing is, does it meet the ordinance?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Essentially, that's what we're hoping to hear.
And Rebecca will give you the list of the requirements and the standard set. You heard us going through and checking off, checking off.
If your ordinance is fairly, you know, in-depth when it comes to site plan requirements, so we'll follow that.
Well, she'll give you the paperwork and, you know, assist you in, if you have a question, like one of the big things. We need surveys of minimum requirement of one inch equals 40 feet. We need setbacks. We're gonna need the specs on the building. We're gonna need lighting. Is there gonna be signage?
Yep. I know your full cutoff lights on that.
Yeah, the illumination and everything like that.
Those details, I just got it approved for commercial buildings in Rundle last night, so I'm familiar pretty much with it. There's similar checklists.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was in a Rundle. I lived in a Rundle for nine years, five years.
This was the next best job.
I was living in a Rundle when they wanted to split the town in half. Don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, oh, I do. I've been around long enough to remember a lot.
So, yeah, that's that's my recommendation, my concerns, my thoughts.
Any others who know, other more members?
Okay. That's it, Tim, Bill, Cecile.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would be concerned if they're gonna have more than 500 employees.
Yeah. Talking three on a commercial.
That's beyond.
And you're not entertaining customers on site. Right? It's a service, so.
The the office, but it's private.
Right.
It's for our own staff, why not? There's not people coming in and out.
How many staff members would you have on site?
Eight to 10.
Maximum number. I mean, this is a business that's functioned in Kennebunk for years this way. This is, by the way, this is a potentially a big change. This is a three-generation business. I work with this kid's grandpa.
I used to live off Curtis Road.
So you're not Curtis or Perking? You remain on the farm?
You get the now the raspberries and the meat house. Yeah.
The meat, the meat's gone now, right? They pretty much shut the butcher shop.
Oh, the slaughterhouse, the slaughterhouse is gone.
The nest slaughterhouse, but his father is now operating the meat store up at the farm.
Yeah.
And you can get a dynamite cut of meat there.
Oh, I still got family that lived there, yes, I know.
Okay, well, we will be back in touch with Rebecca for more detailed guidance. We'll look forward to coming back to see you folks at some point in the future.
And we like thick packets, which means.
No, I like. At my age, it's a complication. It's a simple and sweet.
Sketches gone with crayons on napkins.
Honestly, standing where I stand, it's as important that I'm fiscally responsible to him as much as I need to provide you with everything you need to say yes. There's a magic metal ground there.
Oh, yeah.
And and I'm not in the position to make paper for the sake of paper. You folks don't want to look at it, nor do I want to give it. I don't want to kill more trees.
I was just gonna say, what do you think, paper grows on trees?
Right, it's all recycled anyway.
Yeah. So, yeah, a fully developed site plan application with the who, the what, the where, the when, the why.
Yeah, the butters die.
Your eyes cross your Ts.
How was the operation?
You've got a pretty standard four-wheeling trial's operation.
Yeah. You know, and depending, well, you'll know whether he's gonna use pavement, how much it's gonna be.
Likely to, at least for the foreseeable future, we're bringing gravel.
Gravel. Are you gonna put in storm drains? Storm drain is gonna be required and everything else.
Coming depending on the square footage of our impact area.
Yeah.
Where at the 20,000 level, we won't need to do a fancy stormwater. We get up over an acre. We're gonna be visiting an engineer like the one that was just doing more detailed stormwater.
Are you doing maintenance of those trucks there?
I mean.
Like oil changes and?
Oil change would be the extent. It's not the old days.
So that might be something we need. Right, oil changes, you've got residual oil.
Typically, a commercial building like that would have a wash-down bay. We have a.
Yeah.
A floor drain, which we would have drained at the same location, so it wasn't just.
And all that would fall under Rebecca's program.
Pre-severator or something like that.
Yeah, interior of the building itself. We look at the big picture.
Well, we do, one of the items is where they store.
Yes, one of the has those chemicals, materials.
The oil from the oil changes. We need to know how you store that.
Figure out the fuel. We'll figure out. I've worked with clients with fuel storage in the past, and we put a tank inside of a concrete enclosure. We have a double wall, family gallon now in Kennebunk. These are the details that we will discuss.
Right, because if you do have, let's say you have a thousand-gallon diesel tank. We would, it would have to meet all D E P regulations for the containment and all that.
We'll be back with a plan that shows where the smoke detectors will be in the building. I just want you to this.
And that goes to Rebecca.
Yeah, we don't need that.
We'll accept as much responsibility as necessary, but when it's something beyond our purview, we don't touch it.
You talk about recycled paper. Isn't that what you do?
It's a deceptive business at all. There's a lot of puns we could play.
And I'm sure you've heard of all.
Because I didn't leave there. It's been one of the hardest things I've ever done.
I can imagine.
You can't have good news for people ever. Okay, well, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, inquiring.
Thank you.
Better proactive than to have to be reactive.
Very much so.
I gotta close on Monday, so I don't want to get done.
Do gentlemen sign on our side of the sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, good meeting. The number of employees doesn't make sense at all.
It doesn't. I'm thinking.
It just doesn't make sense.
This is one of the, I had a list of all of these. There's another one here. Bed and breakfast in, it's not even, it's not in the definitions at all. Business office and campgrounds is, is, oh, no, boat and RV sales is a conflict. It says it's allowed in the table, and it's not allowed in the table, but it says it's allowed in the probes.
So do you think they come up under a professional office? Well, I'm looking at it and saying, geez, that almost fits, right? It's a professional contractor.
Yeah, I know.
Well, it's an office.
But these are the kind of issues, these could be corrected, because it doesn't need, we're not changing anything, we're just trying to correct it.
Yeah.
These could be done now.
Why do I have, all of a sudden, just when I think I know something, somebody comes up with something I have no clue about.
I know. That's the nature of the business.
Oh, my goodness.
Don't mess up the order.
With a surprise.
Well, you gave me official ones to be signed, and then you. All right. That's what I was looking for.
You're messing up the order.
No, I'm not.
Yes.
I can't control it.
I know. Kevin and I worked hard on those.
Yes, we did.
I am keeping my mouth shut.
The three-and-a-half-hour meeting was the worst.
That's the, oh, my God, that was harsh. Yeah.
All right.
It's gotta be an easier night.
We have the March 19th Planning Board Public Hearing Minutes. That wonderfully sent out, submitted for Nits, Picks, and everything else. Do we have any more Nits, Picks, Changes, Revisions, Questions, Comments, Concerns? I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Town Alignment Public Planning Board Public Hearing Minutes for March 19th, 2025. We have so moved, do we have a second? We have a second. Do we have any questions? All in common, all in favor? All opposed?
Let's see, abstaining since I was involved with that.
That's right. Okay, one abstained.
All right. What's today's date, 5/7? Well, we're doing signing that. We have the March 19th Planning Board Public Hearing Minutes for April 2nd.
No, no, you put them out of order.
I need my glasses. Why do you think I brought this?
Those were the public hearing minutes, right?
There was a public hearing, so now we move to the Town Alignment Planning Board Meeting Minutes for March 19th, 2025. Any Nits, Picks, Concerns, Questions, Comments, requested revisions, or otherwise changes?
For a hold of peace.
Is that?
For a hold of peace.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Town Alignment Planning Board Meetings for March 19th, 2025. Do I have a second? Kim, seconds, do we have any discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor. Minutes approved.
I was not, I don't think I was at that meeting. That's April 2nd, right?
No, this is.
No, this is the 19th.
Oh, that's my 19th, okay.
Who made the motion?
Don't get out of water. I made a motion.
You're confusing me.
All right, now we'll move on to the Planning Board Public Hearing Minutes for April 2nd, 2025. Nits, Picks, Questions, Comments, Concerns, Revisions, modifications, alterations? Do I have a motion to accept? Tim, motions, I'll second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approved. All right. We have now the Town Alignment Planning Board Meeting Minutes for April 2nd, 2025. Questions, comments, concerns? Nits, Picks, revisions? Motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a motion from Kevin. Do we have a second, Bill?
Yeah. It's been a long day.
Oh, I know. I'll make the second, any discussion? All in favor? Tim's made the second?
Keep up. Good thing you're here, Julie.
I know.
If you notice, I try to do this, but sometimes I can't. We got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, minutes approved.
Give it a ride. Can I get my, load this on that for me?
We'd be happy to.
I didn't eat my wheezes. So I don't sign this because I was not here.
Did you watch the video?
So I abstained from that, because I was not at this meeting.
All right.
But if you watched the video, you can sign.
Yes.
Okay.
We discussed that, yeah.
I think it has been discussed a couple, at a couple of different meetings.
Yeah.
If you kept up.
Hearing, we got that, we got this one.
There should be one more.
One more, which is a Town Alignment Planning Board Public Hearing Minutes for April 2nd, 2025.
No, we already did those.
No, we did those.
You got two copies of it, or you got two?
That's why I was flipping, going, wait a minute.
No, you should have April 16th meeting minutes.
And here's another one that's to be, did you give me duplicate copies of everything to sign?
I don't know. It was a busy day.
Because as they've been coming back, I've been putting them here.
See if it locked in the door or anything.
Yeah. Yeah. You got an April?
My gavel, and I'll do what I want.
You got an April 16th set to sign?
They haven't come back this way. Oh, Cecile's whole.
No, these are mine.
The signed ones.
The signed ones are there, yeah.
March is signed. April 2nd is signed with the official copy.
One April 2nd.
Planning Board Public Hearing, Planning Board Public Hearings. Official, official.
Okay, do you have an April 16th set to sign?
That's April 19th, April 19th.
No, there's no April 19th. April 16th.
April 16th.
Planning Board Public, Planning Board Meeting.
You should have a set free to, and a set to be signed.
Right, unless I've had double set to be signed.
It was.
And the April 2nd one, which is here, which is signed. So I got four.
You should have one more.
Public hearing. Public hearing. 19th, 19th, 2nd, 2nd, 16th.
Yay!
I mean, I got polka dots everywhere. Town Alignment Planning Board Meeting, April 16th, 2025. Nits, Picks, Concerns, Questions, Comments? This was the one that Bill chaired, so you should probably be the one to ask to see if there's a motion or a second.
I'm fine, you're doing good.
It was beautiful.
I watched it the next night. I watched it the next night. He does a wonderful job. I think he's made for the position.
It was beautiful.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 20, the April 16th Minutes as presented. I see Kevin's nod as a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved. That was painful.
Yes.
That's why I was trying to keep them by date and everything and I'm like, why am I getting so many extra copies? Well, that's why I was putting it and stacking it and going, okay, this is in order.
If people wouldn't come in and request permits and make, to make payments while I'm trying to put this.
Uh, no.
You still do an amazing job, you know, with all your distractions.
Thank you.
And as we were saying that, we have several times discussed the fact that if we observe the minutes and the paperwork and the meetings and everything, it is, how is it any different than if you are doing a Zoom meeting?
That's right.
Other than the lack of communications during it, but we're still. All right. Five documents all signed with one extra. Do we want to sign this one just with Julie's personal records? All right, now, for the agenda, old business, have we heard any updates from proper residential subdivision?
I have not heard from them.
And that's the only thing we're waiting for is that paperwork.
Yeah, I think the York County soul and whatever.
Yeah.
I think that was the only thing we were waiting on.
The application process was deemed complete and it was just waiting on something that's beyond their control, our control.
And they were supposed to submit to us their homeless association.
Yes.
I haven't seen that.
I thought I saw that presented something. No, I saw that they were going to make sure that it was due.
Yes.
All right.
So I did not print out an agenda for next time. We do have the public hearing for Carlisle on their preliminary packet. So that's next time.
On the 21st.
On the 21st.
I will not be here on the 21st. I'm.
Was that May 21st?
You either?
Yeah. Yeah, I've already got it in here publicly.
Hopefully, you three can make it.
Yes, the two of us are not going to be here.
That's rather selfish thinking yourself.
I know.
I know, sorry.
It's my first missed meeting in two years.
You're allowed. I'm going to be away. Actually, I'm flying, flying back, but I'm from Boston. I'm not going to be here in time.
Boston?
Boston.
I'm coming, I'm flying into Boston. I'm going to be away. So I don't, I can't, I don't think it would be impossible to be here.
She's not telling us where she's going because, you know, we probably like margaritas or whatever.
I think she should all bring us all a prize.
Yes.
One prize, okay.
Yes.
You got it.
Especially since.
I'll bring you a cactus.
You want to Arizona?
Going to Utah for wedding and then going from Utah to Phoenix.
Nice.
To see my sister-in-law.
Enjoy yourself, you deserve it. So we got Carlisle Brook to do.
Perhaps Danielle, I don't know if she'll find a survey or anything.
We've been hearing that they are typically months out unless you have a connection.
But I will make a note.
To invite her if she has the requested paperwork.
I will put her on as a placeholder, just in case we hear from her. Taylor Nest, if he gets his packet put together, we will put him on as a tentative. Oh, and I have this one. I'm supposed to hand this out to you. This one will be next time. They were a, an inquiry last time. The subdivision, potential subdivision. They want to do a land swap.
Yes.
Old one on Walker Road.
Yep. So they are coming next time.
Okay. So we'll put this, just to start.
Yep. So I knew there was one more thing that I was supposed to mention. So I think that's full enough, nobody else.
This is. All right, so we have a fairly full agenda for, in two weeks. I think we had a very productive meeting tonight. Nice and low-key.
It was very, very busy.
I'd like that. Got accomplished. Do we have anything else the board wants to discuss? Yes, Kevin?
One quick note, the select board reviewed our bylaws on Monday.
Yes.
They had some changes that will be coming back.
Requested changes.
You don't have that yet? I mean, they, they didn't submit it back to us, yeah?
No, that was just Monday night, I believe.
You didn't get the email?
No, about the, about the bylaws?
Yeah.
Did anyone else, maybe they were just directed to you, the chairman?
I don't think not. Where are they? They're, I have them someplace. I printed off. Some, I saw some very good comments or suggestions and then I saw some I very much oppose.
Yeah, we didn't, I don't think any of us have got, have received that.
So, yeah, we'll wait till we hear official recommendations before we speak further because it's not.
Right.
It's recommendations, we write our bylaws unless they are in violation of statute ordinances or other things. They were redone last year with absolutely no problem. But some of the, some of the recommendations were valid, justified. I, I will. Thank you for bringing that up, Kevin. Anything else? Does anyone else have anything they want to say to the board?
Good night.
Close, that was close to what I was asking. All right, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion, opposition? All in favor?[1773.60]